Good evening, everyone. We have Erin Cook-Dumas signed up for open forum. Are you here to speak on the homeschool policy?
Well, I was just gonna listen to what you had to say and if I had...
You're welcome to do that. Did you still want to speak now? Because if you speak during open forum, it isn't a dialogue.
Like, we're still, we still allow people to comment on every agenda item. So if you want to wait for it, you can. But if you want to say something, then now you can too. You want to wait until we get to the item, Erin?
Uh, we probably should wait till we get to the item, probably.
Okay. Does anyone have any request to remove anything from the consent agenda? May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Dr. Senkione?
Okay, under the consent agenda, personnel action resignation is two-fifths social studies teacher at the high school, Paul Broat, and also a resignation for K. Lunch TA at Fort Barton, Sarah Canton. For appointments, though, we have two-fifths social studies at the high school, Sarah Linecooler, our early risers childcare person, Procassett, Sarah Correa, part-time lunch resource aide at Fort Barton, Kelly Santa, part-time lunch resource aide at Ranger, Amy McCormick. For stipend positions, head cheerleading coach, Michelle Carvalaro, AM supervisor at the high school, Terry Roy, after-school detention supervisor at the high school, Terry Roy, online course coordinator at the high school, Kathy Johnston, homework club advisor at the high school, Benjamin Markhart, and the field hockey coach at the high school, Bethany Ferguson.
Thank you. So the first item on our regular agenda is policy development, revision, and review. The first is a second reading for the vehicle usage policy, number 391. May I have a motion to accept this policy?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Eileen, I didn't catch you. Are you in favor?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to our homeschool policy. This is a first reading. The policy subcommittee met in June of this year. And I am going to ask Ms. Donnelly-Roch to take us through the changes.
My pleasure. This policy was 12 pages in length when we started looking at it. And you do have a cleaned-up copy in front of you that is now including attachments, five pages. The process was recommended for revision by the subcommittee, basically to streamline things and with input from families and advocates for families who homeschool. So you will see that rather than families needing to go to perhaps multiple principals in the district, they go to the superintendent's office. And per state law, we try and keep it as simple as possible. So the requirements of the law are there in terms of families needing to document and share information about their children, in terms of attendance, curriculum, and participation. And on our end, we welcome the families to participate in extracurricular activities, field trips and such as, you know, we kept that all in there as it was.
And the classes.
And the classes as it was, yes. So we did not make changes to those pieces. We changed the process for annual approval so that it can be streamlined for families.
Yeah, much, much simpler. And basically, it's Superintendent Senkione has the approval authority.
Yeah, it's really...
Right, it's the principals.
It's just a step.
Right.
Because it's state law.
It's state law. It's actually federal law that kind of governs it.
Yeah. Took a lot of pages out.
There was a lot of redlining.
Although we do, we do still say one of 12 and...
Right, there's, there's pretty enough to do. But substantially, it's a streamlined policy for families. And on our end, it will be handled in the central office rather than at each school.
Do you have something, Eileen?
That it does.
Yes.
So much shorter.
Anyone from the, anyone from the audience care to comment?
Come on up, Erin.
There are a few things, just a few words, choices in it. And number two on the first page, one of one. Upon receipt of any such letter of intent, the superintendent or his or her designee may make an appointment to meet with the family and discuss the proposed educational plan. Because it's not required by law that we have to meet with the, anyone to do it. It's not required. That's optional if families want that.
That is correct.
And most families have been doing it long enough. And we, I normally mentor the, to the new families. So I tell them, you know, what they need to be studying and what they need to be doing and how to, you know, manage their time, that kind of stuff. So I ask that shall be changed to May.
Okay.
And for letter of approval, I know I spoke with the assistant superintendent. And we have not been receiving our letter of approvals. And it got in the way of my son's college application this year. And it was, it was very problematic. She, I was only given his approval letter from ninth grade. And that's what I had to send in because that's all that I would, that's all that they would give me. And I know that before, we've always been had, we've always had one. And it was kept in our file. So my older children, I just, when they did dual enrollment, I just went and got it out of my file. And they gave me a copy of it and we always had it. So I just always assumed that it was in our file, not realizing that somewhere along the line, something changed.
So Erin, are you looking at three where it says...
Well, I'm, I was looking at number three where it was talking about letter of approval. And I didn't want to, I didn't want to forget that, that's something that needs to be addressed. And I think the super...
So when you asked for it, it actually wasn't in your file here?
No.
Oh, okay.
We had not had any letters at all. And, and I guess that's partially my, my blame. So I just assumed that was my number three. All my other ones, it had always been in the file.
They were always in your file.
Yes, it was always in the file. There never was a problem when I asked for it. And then to go, when he's filling out college paperwork, told that there was none to be had. That's, you know, a little bit of a problem. So the college called and took care of it because I was tired of battling that. So it got taken care of. But other families are also having problems. So that, we just wish that that would stop.
Okay. I wonder if under item four, the committee might accept an edit there at the end that, because annually, the family needs to tell us. So perhaps annually, we would follow up with a letter under item four. When you tell us you're going to continue homeschooling, we send you a letter saying we've received your plan.
That's norm, that, normally that's, but it just goes into the file, which really you don't...
Oh, so, so we would send a letter to them and then we would also put it in our file? That's a good idea.
It's in the file for each, being used for homeschooling.
So annually, a letter of approval will go home.
Yes.
And then that way, if they don't, you know, if they, if, if they notify us and they don't get it, it's sort of a trigger, like, wait a minute. It can't be on your file because I didn't get it, you know, I didn't get it either? You think that would be helpful? That sounds like it.
As long as we have a letter of approval, I'm fine with it. Whether it sits in, in his file in the office, I'm fine with that. As long as it's there and I can fetch it when I need it. I don't need, I don't think there needs to be 20 copies of things. As long as it's there, we have it. And there has always been a good rapport with the school system here with homeschoolers. It really hasn't been a problem. So I would really was surprised that that had kind of happened. So I don't anticipate more problems. So I don't feel like there needs to be more work ahead, as long as it's done and it gets put in the file. Because really, it's really when there are high schoolers that you need it. I mean, I mean technically, you need it. But when they're little, they're home, they're not going anywhere. It's for college, for a moment.
Although, I think procedurally, Amy, I think that's a good idea, just for us.
I think it does make sense to make it part of the process, that a letter does go out to the parent. And this way, you know, you as a parent can expect to see it. And as you have it, and now you can assume that it's also in your file.
So maybe item four would be just add a bullet or a paragraph that said annually, written confirmation will be provided. Like when we find out your plan, we'll, because we don't have to approve it annually. We have to approve it once and then you would continue it. But we could write a confirmation note to you, you know.
So that would be, would it be like a 4A?
Yeah. Or another bullet confirmation letter? Or 4A, yeah. To be forwarded to family or whoever enrolly. Family.
One thing for number five. I know when I had sentenced and paperwork. If for number 5A, it may be helpful to say that people asking for textbooks need to know by June because they may not understand that there, you guys have a formula of how you do things, when books need to be returned to the warehouse and when they need to be picked up. So if families know in June that that's when a list, so that they can come, the books can come and be ready for the school year. Because otherwise, you'll, you'll miss that hump. And they won't know that because they're not in the loop, they haven't done it before.
So can we maybe just work the language in that sentence somewhere?
I wonder too if perhaps we can put that in the letter to you. Like, just a little more detail, rather than making that policy. It just, my thought would be that our current provider of textbooks could change at some point, you know? So that we just tell you, this is how you get the, like, give you a little information about that process within that annual letter?
That's a good idea.
Would that suffice?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, just as long as the families understand. Because, you know, I'm at the end of my pile of children, so I won't be doing this much longer. So they won't, you know, they won't know to do that. And you, you had mentioned to me that the homeschoolers will not be allowed to take the PSATs and the SATs.
Yeah, so policy, I think it's 5E, has always noted that participation in all state and local assessments by arrangement with the district is part of a service you can access. And for our state assessments, at this time, the state has decided that 10th graders take the PSAT in school and 11th graders take the SAT in school. So it's a set date. The date is generally arranged by the Department of Education. And we offer it here during the school day for free.
Is there a time that the, that families would need to notify the school to sign up? Because I know for SATs, it's a sign up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, how, how, yeah. How would we notify them?
We don't know your circle.
So last spring, I called each family and sent an email to families in those grade levels for whom we knew that, that might be an option. And we do actually have a requirement through the Department of Education that when the district approves a family or an individual child for homeschooling, we roster them. It's a limited roster, but it certainly, and per policy, they, families have to let us know some details about the children. And the state does keep tabs on the children and how they're progressing, whether they choose public, private, or homeschooling. So we do have a way to roster them through the state information system.
And how should, who should they contact, though? Should they, one of the holes that we have is who to contact for things. Because as a general rule, when homeschoolers call, we don't get responses.
I'd be happy if you want to contact me.
Okay, because then I will let the community know that if they have any issues to contact.
And we can put that in the letter, too.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Perfect.
All right, because we just don't have a point. The other thing is, what is the policy for kindergarten through grade four? I know when my children were little, they were allowed, depending on the principal, to go into school and take art or recess or lunch. And it always was on the principal, is that. I, my youngest is in eighth grade now, so I don't know what principals are doing for homeschoolers. There, there, that used to be more of a, actually was more of a policy. We were allowed to go in and take music, art, recess. So I don't know what it is now for the little ones. Someone has asked me that and I don't have little ones anymore. So I don't know what to say.
Yeah, and this, this, this policy doesn't address the...
It only speaks to grades five through 12.
Because that's always been, it's actually always been allowed.
Because that would be something that we'd have to, that would be different. So how do we want to approach that? Do we want to send it back to the policy subcommittee to discuss that?
Yeah, we'll make these revisions and bring it back, either policy subcommittee or just bring it back for a second reading in two weeks.
Because do we need to have a discussion about the K through four? I mean, I'm, that's not something that, I mean, it's not, I mean, that might be something they will, they were doing, but it's certainly not something that was part of policy. So I don't know if you want...
I would want input from all three elementary principals as well.
Yeah, I know what their number one, you know, certainly going to be willing to work with all children. It's going to be based on space, though.
Right.
I mean, you know, we're getting overcrowded in a few places, so...
So it might be K through four, of K through four as space allows type of a deal?
Normally, it's been first through fourth because K is so short. You know, it's normally first through K.
K is all day now.
K is all day now.
Oh, see, I'm out of the loop.
Yeah. Well, your kids get older, you don't pay, you know, you don't keep up.
So they just, you know, it kind of depended on the principal. We'll just let that go.
Yeah, so we'll put it on policy subcommittee for the 24th and also put it on the agenda. And then you can, we can decide whether to move it forward or not.
Perfect, perfect, yeah, yeah. Because that's, I agree, I would like to hear from the, as I'm sure you would as well, Dr. Senkione. But, but that's a good, good point to that that's missing. And what, what do we want to say, if anything, in there?
If a child is going to private school, though, shouldn't they also notice? Shouldn't, they don't, the town doesn't need to know?
We do get that information from the Department of Education. And we do, they figure it out from the schools which they attend, yes.
Okay. And on the last, the last page. Number five. Evidence of achievement in the core curriculum subject for the preceding school year. It has, is, and I'm requesting that it say, may be required if the student was homeschooled during the year? Because my children went in and they took some classes and they were fine. And they, I don't think any parent would purposely put their child in some class that they don't belong in. The purpose is to succeed. And so I just, I'm just suggesting that instead of is, it says may be, may be required.
So this is for...
Number five on the left.
Yeah, so this is for the ones that, where they would be enrolling at the district? Yes? Yes, this is the form that says the partial enrollment? I have requests, am I on the wrong page?
That's the last, it doesn't have a number. It's the last, yeah, it doesn't have a number.
Yeah, partial enrollment. I have requested partial enrollment in the Tiverton Public Schools.
Okay.
So this is for...
Yes, number five.
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure I was on the right page.
Yeah, sorry, there's a lot of pages, yeah. Number five. That it be changed to may be required.
I think, I don't know how you feel about it. I don't know if you need some time to discuss it?
Yes, we do.
With the educators? And make a determination on that at the policy subcommittee meeting in two weeks?
That's what we're planning on doing.
Okay. Definitely taken under advisement.
And I think that's, I think that's good.
It's good, a lot shorter, I really... Thank you, Erin.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you want to say something, please?
Yes, sure.
Yeah.
Erin, I just want to say that you have been an excellent homeschool mother.
Oh, thanks.
You were always on time with the paperwork. And you and I communicated sometimes on a weekly basis. And you followed through on everything. You followed through on everything. I know there were some bumps along the way. But you were a wonderful homeschool teacher. The kids are very fortunate to have, you know, been able to have you do that. You anticipated and everything, you made sure, think of everything you needed. So as they move along, and maybe go off on another direction. And I hope they continue to do well.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Erin, I know you've worked on these policies with us several times.
A few times.
We appreciate the feedback very much.
Oh, thank you so much, thank you very much.
Without our chair here, I think I would like to defer item 10A, all business, until his arrival. Do I have a motion to accept that change?
Yes, so moved.
All those in favor? Okay, under item 10B, this is one of mine, so I don't mind bringing it up now. Dr. Senkione, I'd asked for someone to take a look at whether or not we could move homeschool requests to the consent agenda. Do you have a re...
And the answer to that is yes.
Okay.
Under the law.
Yes, it's actually where it should reside, to be honest with you.
That's where it should reside. So beginning with our next meeting, we'll move any homeschool requests to the consent agenda. And we will vote on them along with everything else, okay?
Perfect.
Okay. Dr. Senkione, do you want to go ahead with the spotlight on success?
Sure, we could get the certificates at some point when our chair arrives. But yes, we have the fortunate opportunity to recognize some outstanding students from the high school. So I'm going to ask Principal Ashley to explain why they're here and to go forward.
Thank you. So it gives me great pleasure this evening to recognize four students, two of which are here this evening for a variety of accomplishments, actually. And I'd like to begin with the 2019 Secretary of State Civic Leadership Award. And it's given to juniors around the state of Rhode Island who make outstanding contributions to their schools and communities and in particular exhibit qualities in public service, leadership, and academic achievement. And I'm pleased this evening to recognize Ms. Abigail Forzier, who couldn't make it this evening, but Ms. Michelle Umahara, who is here this evening. So I'd ask Michelle to come up and congratulate you on your achievement. Each year, the state treasurer Seth Magaziner recognizes high school juniors from high schools across the state with the Young Leader Award. And in particular, these students demonstrate outstanding achievement in math, economics, finance, and business-related courses. And there's an active component of community service. And so we were pleased to recognize for the year 2019, Mr. Harshul Patel for the Young Leader Award. Congratulations, Harshul. And we also had a unique opportunity. A couple lives in the town of Tiverton who retired recently and spent their professional lives in the entertainment industry. Early in the summer, decided to send out notice to any high school student in Tiverton, Portsmouth, and Little Compton to submit an essay. And the prompt was simply, "Seeing Hamilton in Providence this summer is important to me because..." And the students were left to fill in the blank. And across all three towns, we were excited to announce that one of our incoming students, Mr. Ethan Aguar, was actually selected by this couple and got to see Hamilton at P-PAC this summer. And so he couldn't make it this evening. He was disappointed because of a family conflict. But loved the show, I spoke to the family. And, and I also spoke to one of the retired individuals who put on the essay contest. And he made a comment about how academic and insightful the student was to, you know, put, put his words on paper and express why the arts are important to the student. So we wanted to recognize Ethan Aguar and his accomplishment this past summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now that we have our chair, we'll give him a moment to, to settle in a little bit.
I was just gonna say, carry on.
Actually, we can go over to new business, item 11B, Attorney General Summit. Dr. Senkione and Mrs. Black.
So this past August, Ms. Black, Ms. Pavo, and myself attended the Attorney General Summit. It was training on both the public records request system and the open meeting law. In your packet, I provided you the PowerPoint presentation that guided that training. We've sort of compared it to what Tiverton is doing. We've got a couple adjustments to make. But for the most part, things in here are complying with both those regulations and laws.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
So as you all know, every year when I go, I raise my hand and ask them why they haven't changed the law yet to let us add something to the agenda, just like everyone else can. The town council can and everyone else can, it says, except for school committee. And this year, I was very excited because in that little block, it said new and improved. I said, no, it's not. You haven't improved anything. You, you still haven't included us. And I said, who makes these laws? Because I knew, the General Assembly. I said, do they have to abide by them? No. So why are they doing this? So again, we're going to appeal to our reps and our senators and make sure that we can add something. You can't vote on it, just like the, you know, everybody else, but we should be able to add something, especially in the schools, because things do pop up last minute. And then people have to wait two weeks, it's crazy. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know, I stood up for all of you again. As soon as I raised my hand, he started laughing because he knew what was coming. Okay. And as you know, it's important to go because they keep changing the rules every year. They say, why do you go every year? I said, because they keep changing the rules.
Yes.
Excuse me, I have the, oh, the other thing was, I forgot. And I talked to you about it, Dr. Larkin.
Yes.
We have, have two information offices. And it used to be Mr. Eric and Mr. Um...
Yeah, I think that's actually...
Is that on another one?
Yeah, yeah, that's a lot of them.
Okay, I want to make sure we do that because that's important, thank you.
So any other comments or...
We need to go back to 10A.
10A?
Yep.
10A, okay, so 10A, spotlight on success, student recognition.
No, that's 11A.
Sorry. 10A, consideration of solar contract. Okay, there we are. So we had a presentation last meeting. And we had asked that we have an opportunity to look at the town solar contract and sort of have some more information. I know we had some information from Joe about the electric bills over the last several years. So I'll open it up to comment or questions on the part of the committee or Dr. Senkione?
Sure, I take it as I'd just like to give a quick overview of where we are and take direction from the committee where you'd like to go. I also want to recognize Paul Duker from KIR-SAGE is here again this evening. So did you have any specific questions regarding his company and so forth? Sort of chronological order here. The town administrator contacted us about joining them on their contract for solar power. They had gone out to bid, received multiple responses, vetted all those responses, and had their attorney look at this and approve the response. They awarded the contract and the bid to KIR-SAGE. They awarded the contract and the bid to Kirsage. Um, after that, Joe met with Jan and reviewed the bids and the procedures for selecting Kirsage. Uh, Kirsage then made an offer to up the reimbursement from 28% that the town would receive to 30% for both the town and the schools if the schools should decide to join in with the town. Um, Joe has reviewed the contract that Kirsage has sent to all of us now. We also sent the contract to our attorney, who has reviewed it and also concluded that legally, we can join in on the town's awarded contract. So, that's where we stand at this time, just to give you a quick update.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes.
I'm going to say your name wrong. Mr.?
Reduka.
Reduka. Um, I want to thank Mr. Reduka for all the information that he did send us very, very quickly after our last meeting. I am, I am going to say, though, however, um, since we only got this two weeks ago, I haven't had a chance to do all of the reading that I would have liked to have in that two-week time. Um, specifically, I wanted to do a little bit more research into the net metering for Rhode Island. I did put a call out to one of the school committee members in a district that Kirsage does work in. Um, I have not had a chance to return the call. Um, I would prefer that we table this to a future agenda. I mean, it's a 25-year contract. I'm not comfortable, but I'm just speaking for myself, that I, in that two-week timeframe, just due to my own schedule, have not had a chance to become comfortable with approving this evening.
Okay.
But in, in, Mr. Reduka was great and, and has sent us everything that certainly we requested.
Yep. Okay. Mrs. Black, anything?
No, I was just wondering, when the school's bringing on so much, how come it was so little of a, you know? The percentage was only, went up a little.
Well, that's-
How does that work? How does that work? Is that generous?
That's pretty generous on that.
Okay, I just want you to just let me know.
You know, and just, and it's public knowledge. We actually just signed the, the, uh, we're awarded North Kingstown, which was, um, roughly 5.6 million kilowatt-hours, which eclipses this by this- between the school and-
And the town.
And their town is about 2.2 million kilowatt-hours. That's like 5.6, and that discount rate is 25%. Um, that was awarded to us on there. We are working on that, the, um, just to give you in context.
I just wondered how you did-
Yeah.
How you figured that out, you know?
We like Jan. We like, I lived in Tiverton, I don't know. It's just the percentage, we really were aggressive. We have projects that are out there. Um, just in context, and I think you guys should, do you do, I'd rather you guys be comfortable with your decision.
It's 25 years.
Exactly. And, um, the, uh, the one thing is just to understand and where I'm coming from is, um, and I've worked writing most of the legislation for the net metering laws in Rhode Island on the task force on that. So if there's any question you guys have, feel free to ask me, or I can even direct you into the Office of Energy if you want some more independence on that. Um, currently, at the end of this year, the federal tax credit is, is phasing out for solar. Um, it's going to start phasing out over the next four years. Um, Rhode Island's market is going to change a bit. It's going to start maturing with some of the more of, less, less demand, and some of the supply are going to be changing to where the rates, I predict rates will be coming down as far as what discounts are going. Currently, Massachusetts is a matured market for solar, and the discounts are 5 to 10% currently for solar projects contracted on there. So, as we kind of move along, our, our prediction where we're seeing the market going is that they're going to, it's going to start tightening up, especially with the tax credit phasing out, which is the largest driver for this. And that's really, the community solar program was built so that municipalities and nonprofits can take advantage of solar. But also that, because we can monetize the tax credits while a nonprofit and municipality cannot monetize the tax credit. And it also shifts the risk to us. The risk is really totally on us, in the sense that the worst thing happens and the project doesn't run anymore, you're not, you're not getting a discount. You're going back to where you would have been anyways. If for any reason, a municipality or our offtakers default, that puts us in a bad position. So the risk really is on our side, and as I said, the discount is without a floor. So you get a 30% discount without any floor. Most developers will put either in a fixed price or a discount with a, with a floor that you'll, you, if the energy prices would drop, you could go through. But, as I said, if anyone has any questions, totally available.
I just want to, um, when I was looking at this contract, and I don't know how accurate- I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
Exhibit A, um, in your contract, gives the listing for the town's usage as 800,000 kilowatts for the three-year average. Is that correct?
Yes, and the contracted amount is 750.
Okay.
Because, um, we do that so that if there's any, um, energy savings, uh, effects, um, we basically account for that. So it gives some headroom, you know?
So you would expect to provide the town 750 on a regular basis?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. So, how does that translate to the schools?
So, in the school side, it's, um, 2,076,000 kilowatt-hours, which is your usage. And I think we used 1,766 for the contracted amount. And that gives you, I think, roughly a 15% buffer. I think we, I wanted to give you guys more of a buffer, because I think there's some talk of some efficiencies that may go on. And that number can change. That's something we could sit down at some point and talk. It's as far as what that number is going to be, um, based on efficiencies.
Yeah, I'm surprised we're not more.
We're actually, yeah, I, I-
A little bit more than double.
Yeah, we, we-
Of what the town is.
Yeah, a bit more than double of what the town is.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
But, yeah, okay. Thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, that, that was the thing. Yep.
And, and just so you're aware, the solar array degrades about a half a percentage, um, every year. So it keeps building up some more headroom on there for efficiencies and stuff like that. And that's accounted for in that schedule. You could see where it starts off at 1,766, and you'll see a little bit of a drop every year.
Um, where you mentioned the solar arrays do lose a little bit. What is your expectation for future development of solar arrays? I mean, has the technology been pretty steady the last 10 years?
Yeah. I've been in it long enough to where I'm actually decommissioning projects I've actually built. And those are 20, 20-plus years old. Um, they become what we've, what I've seen is they just become, the panels become more efficient. But the economics are already done right at the day one of it, you know? Unlike a, a, a coal plant, they have to buy their energy, their, their feedstock every year. While in solar, you're buying all the feedstock day one. So the economics are set from day one to work based on the efficiency of those panels. When I started the industry, we were using panels that are about 135 watts. Now we're up to 400-watt panels. But this is the exact same technology. It's just that they're able to kind of get more in a smaller space. Panels are basically are the same size and the same technology on them. But it's, um, a big percentage of now of the, uh, of the country's output, along with the wind.
Oh, definitely. Um, and you just brought to mind a question. What happens should, and I hate to say this, a meteor fall from the sky on your farm?
On my farm?
Not your firm, your farm.
My farm. My solar farm?
Yes.
Well, we have a business interruption insurance, um, and so we would actually per our contract, if there's any failure on that, we actually would have to make you whole on, on it. But we have, you know, insurance to rebuild it. We have insurance for business interruption that would cover any of the shortfalls of the actual, uh, unit if it goes down. And that can go down to whether there's some disruption, someone takes a pickup truck and drives into our array or something like that. We're insured for all those, those instances. We have had lightning strikes on an array, you know? But the interruption for that was like one day.
Okay. I'll, I'll say that I did spend some time over the weekend looking at the, the state's websites in this regard. And it's, it's quite the learning.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, you know, for someone who's not inclined-
It's a lot to come up to speed on.
It really is. So I can appreciate Mrs. Palas' desire to hold off a little bit, because it, there was a lot of reading there.
And just, just to, so you're clear is that we're a developer, and we're one of the few developers that only develops projects and constructs them, but owns and ops or operates them, um, long-term. Um, in my office, I was up in the Boston office today, right next to me are the operations. People were monitoring our arrays, um, with the computers and monitoring the output. They could see when there's issues, um, and they also have cameras on sites to actually monitor. We also have one site that has sheep on it, and we monitor the sheep and make sure they're doing their job.
Eating grass.
And they, they maintain the, uh, the grass. But if you do research on us, I think you'll find that our reputation is stellar in the state, in Massachusetts. Every project was done. We've never defaulted on a contract. We have never, we have finished every single project that we were engaged or started. So, and which is a nice thing to have behind us.
Thank you again for coming.
Oh, no problem.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
I'm right in Bristol.
So when, so when Solarise Tiverton came, you know, that whole thing from the state-
Yep.
And we did it over at Sandy Woods, and it was, it's a great project. And then I was asking why the schools and the town couldn't be involved, so I'm glad they did make it happen.
Yeah, the community, the virtual net metering-
At first, you couldn't do that.
Is what, which is what is the basis of the, for the community solar. Net metering is where it's sitting on, behind the meter on a facility, like I have on my house.
Yeah.
But the virtual net metering really was what we pushed through to get so that the municipalities, and really the schools, and the theory is that you're going to save 30%, even though if there's a socialized cost for the tax credits out there, we're putting it back in another pot that the school actually saved the money, the taxpayers saved the money.
Yeah, so it goes, it goes down to the town, yeah, but that's what we asked for. Because it was for everybody. It's for the whole town. It's going to save if you help us.
Yes. No, it definitely will.
Thank you for doing that.
Anyone else, any other questions?
So, Mrs. Black, that's kind of what your comment about the 30. Um, that's where I wanted to, I, I was trying to delve into that a little bit more, because while it seems on the face of it, okay, the town is getting 28, they're going to raise to 30.
Right.
We're going to get 30, but if the town still gets 28 and we could get 32, we're double the kilowatt usage. That would be more savings. So I'm, that's what I'm kind of trying to get comfortable with, is that 30%, and no offense.
I was too. That was the only thing, you know?
Shouldn't pencil.
I'm going to make sure, going to squeeze everything out.
You're right.
And you went to stand.
And, you know, and it is, and, and it is such a long commitment. And, and as you know, this really only came to us a few weeks ago. So it's, it's, you know?
The long term is because we're locking in the solar site. There's an underlying lease that we have that's for 25 to 30 years on the site. Um, and our economics, actually, our paybacks really don't hit until after year 12, is when we actually start seeing our payback on the projects, um, through the tax equity and that.
And, and like I told you at the last meeting, you definitely have the leg up because you're here. No one else is. So it's, it's really just getting-
70% of life is just showing up. Some percentage like that.
Dr. Senkione has something?
Mrs. Pavo, any questions?
Paul, I appreciate you giving the school committee the time to do their due diligence, but you did last time mention that, you know, there's eventually going to be a deadline here.
Projects are filling up. I'm jockeying, as a matter of fact, today I met with a managing partner to jockey projects around, because I right now have, um, we have several schools that are coming to us through the diocese to the tune of 19 million kilowatt-hour.
So like the end of our next meeting or middle of October, is that going to be an issue? Well-
We'll make room. But it is, it's, it's getting, it's getting competitive, and we're getting a lot of people coming to, to, to us. We have right now, I'm, I have three RFPs I'm responding to this week. One for 6.5 million kilowatt-hours, which is Westley Hospital. Um, Ripta for 3.7 million, and the diocese and all the schools through that, actually for another, for 19 million kilowatt-hours on that. And then I also have, uh, we have other ones that are actually not going through RFP processes, but have reached out to us because of our, our projects that they're interested in. Because some of our projects are brownfields, um, like Ripta wants to, wants to put their project on a brownfield or a contaminated or a compromised site, as we refer to them. So all our projects are either compromised, and the sites that aren't, we're actually donating the land after the end of the solar array is taken out. They're getting donated for open space to the town or one of them as to the nature conservancy.
And I believe you mentioned to us the last time you were here that this particular project was on a brownfield.
Yes. I'd like to put you guys on a brownfield. It'd be great. And that's, that's what the town did, and then Jan was very adamant on that, because there's been blowback of, of those, some of those issues of the projects.
He's right. Yeah.
And that, one of his requests in, in the RFP was that they would put, um, a higher importance on a project that was uncompromised land, you know, whether it's already been cleared or something along those lines, especially a brownfield and a landfill.
Well, I mean, I, I'm not comfortable just because I said it's just been a crazy two weeks, but if the rest of the committee is, I mean, I can't speak for the rest of the committee.
Well, so I think that's what we probably need to establish is when, so I guess three things. One is, what is a reasonable time course for an answer for you guys?
Mm-hmm.
Um, our next meeting is the 24th, and then it'd be sometime in October.
The 8th, I think.
If those, hm?
The 8th, October 8th.
Sounds right.
October 8th, I mean, that'd be, that would be reasonable if you can get, the 24th is a meeting too?
Yes, we have a meeting on the, two weeks from tonight, and then-
24th, and we have a meeting on the 8th.
I think.
Either of those, you would still be able to-
Yeah, we have, we have fair amount of projects that they are filling, and it's, sometimes it's tough, because if we get the award for all three of those RFPs, it's, you know, it's, uh, if everyone shows up to the party that you invited, you know, all the food goes in with those RFPs.
Leave a little for us, please.
You know, sorry.
You get a bonus.
So then the, the next question is, do we want to set a target for ourselves when we make this decision?
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
I think so too. And what do, you know, what more do we need in order to make that decision? And is it something we need to get ourselves, or is it something that we want to request of Kirsage or of Joe or National Grid or?
I think the things that I need are on me.
The, the things you need are on you.
Are individual for me.
Okay.
Now, I can also tell you that our town administrator, Jan, has made the RFP documentation that he has available to us.
Oh, nice. Could you, could you forward that to everyone?
The borrowing, he's a-
Oh, it's huge. All right, all right.
Oh, it can't be.
He said he can put it on a flash drive for us, or he can, you know, you can certainly borrow it.
Do you, do you think we could invite him actually to come to us and lay out the process for-
On the 24th?
On the 24th?
That would be good.
And I think if we had that, we would probably all feel comfortable that we were, you know, kind of going in as a community and, and doing this, rather than sending a binder.
That's a good idea. Here's your binder.
All right.
Good sleeping material.
So I think, uh, you know, I, I feel fairly comfortable with this, but I would, I think it'd be good to hear in person from, uh, Jan and, and, you know, then set a target of making a decision on the 24th.
I think it really comes down to the length of the contract and making sure we're doing everything we absolutely need to do to have a level of comfort.
Yeah, that's your comfort. I'd rather you come into, come into, come into the deal comfortable. So, okay, no problem.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else, any other comments on that? All right, so... We did 10-
We're up to 11C.
Dave.
Our buddy Dave. Hi, Dave.
Happy to be here. Sorry I'm late.
So, 11C is the building project closing budget. We have, uh, Mr. Dave DeQuatro from RGB, who is our agent for the project. Dave, thanks for coming.
Nice to be here. Happy to see everyone. Hope everyone's well. Everyone looks well.
We are. The lights are on.
I noticed those went off, like this should be doing.
As far as we know, there have been no leaks.
That's a good thing, especially with all the rain we've had.
Do you want to, do you want to go over this, or you want to just start with questions?
That's committee's prerogative. Dave, we provided you a document of the most up-to-date budget accounting of, of the project, both bond and the, um, funds from the capital fund. So, I guess-
Just to confirm, it's dated March 13th?
There's, so there's not a, this is the latest version?
It's the latest one we have in our office. It's 13 March, yes.
Okay.
So I'm going to start out with a big question for me. What balance to finish, where is that? Can we spend it?
Yeah, I'll explain, I'll explain, because this is kind of confusing when you first look at it.
Um, I got to find the document first.
I mean, because I can see, and we've seen this before, and you've got it all, like, detailed, and here's what was available, here's what we committed, but here's a balance to finish, so.
Yeah.
I'm just-
Bottom right.
How is that going to work?
No, I don't need one right now.
Everybody got it?
Yep.
Okay. So bottom right, so.
Bottom right, it's twenty-one thousand.
And then the what amount above?
Yeah, the balance, the balance you should have left is twenty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars.
So the two sixty-six is not left?
Of the, the two sixty-six, let's see what it says here, of the funds total, yeah, the project contingency is only twenty-one thousand dollars left of that.
Yep, I get the project contingency, and then is there?
There is two sixty-six supposedly left, but there was a one point, one four zero five up. If you look at the top left column under cost.
Yep.
Ceiling and lighting. If you remember, that was given by the school committee of its extra funds to dedicate that money, with the idea that if they had any extra, it could potentially go back into that, or the school could use it for another use.
Okay.
So we kind of made that, tried to make that even, and waited to the end of the project to see what you had left.
Which is not much. So, so I guess, like, what's the mechanics of that? Does the bond money go back to the town? Is that still available for us to spend?
Twenty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Two hundred and sixty-six thousand seven thirty-two plus twenty-one seven thirty-three of the contingency.
So typically, when you take a bond out, it's like an equity line you take on your house. If you don't spend it, you don't have to spend the interest. So you can take it and get the interest, you get the receivables back from RIDE if you make the reimbursements, and you get that thirty-five minimum back. You potentially have a higher percentage now. If you do certain items with Energy Star or Saving Energy, anything like that, we can put in for an extra percentage back. But right now, you can base it on thirty-five percent of that would come back to the town. It doesn't come back to the school.
Well, but the two, but again, so the two sixty-six, even though it was part of the bond and essentially it's done, we can still spend it on projects.
So the way the bond is written, I'm not a bond counsel, but I, my experience is the way the bond written is how you can spend it. So, for example, if the bond was written to spend on the middle and the high school, and you want to go do an elementary school, that may be a problem with your bond, but you can still spend the money within the bond limits.
Well, I mean, we had a number of change orders in each building.
Yeah, right. You know, I reviewed these change orders right over here, just to kind of refresh my memory on them. The bulk of the change orders was actually added benefit to the, to the building, whether it be repointing, that wasn't part of the scope, because you didn't think you had enough money, or it was mechanical units, or even down on the last one, the CMU that was falling down. So it was all things that they found during construction. So looking back in accounting, you used a lot of your contingency to build up what you had now, kind of a wish list, so.
So we have basically two hundred and eight, two eighty-eight thousand left that we could do further capital improvements of the high school and the middle school.
Yeah. For example, I know there's plans to do the toilets. We're doing toilets in this school and the middle school right now. So we went to RIDE, we get that approved from RIDE, and then we just.
So this can be used for that?
Absolutely.
Not necessarily. So on top of.
On top of the.
Capital, this could be, okay.
We had gone out as a change order during construction for this building to do that toilet, and the numbers came back.
Just crazy, I remember, yeah.
So we decided to pull back.
Like gold.
You know, sometimes you catch contractors, if they either underbid the job too much, or this is their chance, they're, they're not going to give you a better rate, they're going to give you the top rate.
Or overbid if they're busy and they don't really need the work.
They'll pay overtime, they'll have the people come in on the weekend, they'll get charged this way. This is definitely a better thing to do competitively. I also think it's a small job where you, a good GC would look at this thing and kind of sneak it in. You could also get a local contractor as well. I mean, they're small enough projects where you don't need this large crew. It does have to be prevailing wage by state law.
So just custodial wise, who has that money? The treasurer?
Whoever keeps, I would see the finance department would have it, and the town, and then.
So the treasurer, okay.
And then the finance department and the school would be able to communicate with them back and forth.
Yep, yep.
So just for purposes of clarifying for everyone what exactly we're looking at and talking about. So we have a document with four columns. I don't know if we can pull it up on the.
Could we put it on the screen? It's part of our package, or no?
You don't have that? Okay, all right. But just then, for descriptive purposes, we have category, which is sort of all the different general areas of the endeavor. We have costs, which was the budgeted amount of money, including money that was appropriated from the fund balance, one point four million for ceiling and lighting. There should be draft walls in here somewhere too. I just don't see it for some reason.
That was part of the change orders, I think?
Yeah, I know, but I can't see it. I can't remember how much that was. I thought it was a couple hundred thousand dollars. We have previously paid, which has been paid out for the various amounts of work. Balance to finish is the cost less what was paid, correct? So that is actually money that was, so that's a, it's not balance to finish as in more money that we need to spend to finish the job. It is
It's a net finish.
The balance at the finish of the project.
Correct. This is a deducted analysis, starting with the top, how much money you've spent on hard and soft cost. And Jerry, that's, change order number four is the two hundred thousand, if you look at that.
Do we know?
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Do we know the treasurer has this? I would like to give this to her and just confirmation from her that she's in agreement, that she actually is holding this, and she's the one who holds this. Do we know she has a copy?
I don't know. We can certainly send that to her and also get a conference call. If you want to get a conference call going, we can talk back and forth.
Just, just so that the person who holds the money says, yes, this is what I have.
I think it'd be important for her to have this document.
Yeah, I think, yeah, she would like, she should need to have a copy of this too, since she was paying all the.
Right. One thing that isn't on here that I saw was usually legal fees. Sometimes individual towns take that out of their own department. Sometimes they throw that back at the bond, depending on how, but there's usually an attorney involved, either selling the bonds or the bond transaction. And again, towns do it different ways. If they.
I want to say that actually went through the town itself. We didn't have anything to do with that.
I wonder if they put it against the bond?
Yeah, we'll have to see if they, that's a good question for Denise, to make sure if they didn't, that they could, you know, that, you know, if that's someplace that you've seen it before, where do those costs end up?
Some towns handle it internally, and it doesn't cost anything. Other towns throw everything to the bond.
I mean, maybe that's in bond insurance or overhead, so maybe it's in here.
Could be. I'd ask the questions where, where can you explain that, that cost and elaborate on that? Let them come back and elaborate what they spent that money on.
So, but to get to the, you know, point of the spear here, so the ultimately, the bond plus the appropriations plus the contingency was, or actually not plus contingency, so the ultimate appropriation of the bond plus two hundred thousand dollars for the draft walls, plus one point four million for ceiling and lighting tiles came to about sixteen point eight million dollars. We spent sixteen point five seven seven million dollars, leaving a total, and, you know, whether or not you count that as coming out of the, you know, being still in the bond money or in the money appropriated by the school committee of two hundred sixty-six thousand seven thirty-two plus twenty-one seven thirty-three from the contingency.
Yes.
Yes.
So we're, so we are actually under budget.
Yep.
Maybe not so much on time, but.
That's right. And like I said, you utilize your contingency. A lot of times, people think contingency is, in case there's an overrun, in case something happens, I'm going to use it. But the, actually, the building committee was pretty good. We set aside dollars and amounts and specifics what we would spend it on if we had extra money, and we ended up having extra money. And, you know, as a result, you're still doing your toilets. Like your windows need to be redone in the building eventually.
Right.
It's a great building. There's nothing wrong with this building. It's great. So a lot of towns, you know, you hear a lot of stuff that's going on. I'm like in eleven communities right now, and a lot of them want to build new schools, but a lot of them can't afford them. So we look at the schools, and buildings like this built in the mid-sixties were great buildings, because they'll last eighty years, a hundred years, and you can modify them. So in other words, the technology was such in the sixties, where if the building was built in the eighteen hundreds, you wouldn't have all the central ventilations that are all built in now. It's like one of those change orders was, when they took the existing univentilators out and they put the new ones in, well, the new ones are all square and perfect, but the original ones weren't exactly perfect. When they built them, they built them around the school. So one of those change orders was putting cove moldings around the front, so you wouldn't see the gaps and all that stuff. That's the worst case scenario you get on these type of buildings. Things aren't exactly plumb. But other than that, the systems are conventional systems, and they're not anything that's antiquated or can't be modified, so it's a nice building.
So, Mr. Crown Valley, if you just come down to the bottom, I think you're already there. So the, you know, again, the total bond plus appropriations, I think, keep going. So with sixteen point eight, we came in at about sixteen point five seven seven with about two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars under budget. Okay? That's good.
It's always good to be in the black.
It is. Black is good.
All right. Any other questions or comments, Mrs. Black?
No, I just had a question about, I know the, when you have a bond, you have a reimbursement to the town, and they usually put that towards the bond, I guess. But when we take our own money out, you know, like we did for that, I still think we've always pledged to the town, this is the only way you get money back from us. So I just wondered about that piece, that's all. You know, the one point three whatever, that came out of our budget. It's different than if it's a bond.
I think because it was still within the scope of the project that we, of the, so we had a five-year plan at RIDE.
Yeah, yeah.
I think because it was within the scope of that project, because it was all things that had been, actually, the draft laws, I'm not sure about, all things that had been identified in our original facilities study.
But it'll still go back to the town, that's my question.
Oh, as far as I am aware, yes.
Because I, I mean, we've always said that.
Yeah, the thirty-five percent, you mean, that was already netted to you.
Or the poverty depends upon.
Goes back to the town. I guess you could argue for that.
No, but I think we've always said that to the town, so I don't want to say now, like, we're going to keep that piece of it or something.
I don't think anybody's saying that.
Oh, I've heard that, so I just want to make sure.
That's a quarter of a million dollars. Quite a bit of money.
Okay.
That's important.
Okay. Good. So.
We're done.
Yeah, we're kind of.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, anytime, and if you want.
I feel like we need to give you some sort of parting gift.
Well, actually.
Smile, smile is all I really need.
And the building committee.
Give him a blanket.
So I'm going to take the floor for a minute about this, actually. So this was a project that started, I want to say in two thousand thirteen, in Mr. Rierick's original budget to have a facility study. We had a lot of people help us, including RGB. I think you guys were the original architects as well, right?
Yep.
So, and there were a lot of, there was a lot of involvement from principals, including Mr. Cabral, when he stepped in for Mr. Rierick, when he was sick, our principals. So Mr. McKinnon was involved, Mr. Ashley was involved, Mrs. Craven, Lori Diaz Mitchell. Mr. Fizette, Dr. Sanchioli, Mrs. Donley Roach, and real, some really critical. Yeah, Mr. Mendez. Some really critical community involvement by Sue Zimmick, who's an architect, Jim Odell, who's a contractor, Kelly Lebec, Dave Perry. You know, really, this was a broad-based community effort. I just want to thank everybody for all of the hard work and dedication. They came to these meetings, week after week, month after month. It takes an entire city to renovate a school, so, and our voters too, who actually approved the original bonding by, I think it was something like eighty to twenty percent, or seventy to thirty percent. So it passed without any question. So, thank you to everybody.
Yeah, I got to say, and the building committee was an absolute joy. The superintendents, both Peter and Bill, were excellent to work with, and we're ongoing working with them right now with the toilets, which you'll see the bathrooms all come alive, actually, come from the nineteen sixties up to the modern day, which should be nice. But the school committee, I got to say for you, it's, I mean, I work in eleven, twelve different communities at a given time, and a lot of times, school committees are controversial. This school committee, although it was controversial one way or the other, all got behind each other and supported that, that benefit. And the result was a great construction. We had a great contractor, Alborg, did a great job. So we all together put our hands together, it was really nice. Great opportunity, and we're all smiling at the end, which is all good.
Yeah, yeah, and our contractor was great, Jude and everybody else, so.
Very good.
And it looks so beautiful. It's wonderful.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Good job. Mrs. Lebec, you want to come up and take a bow?
No.
All right.
Okay, so if I'm not hearing anything else, then I'll work with Peter with the finance director of the town.
We'll get the doc out to her.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you again, everyone, for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if the finance committee wants to take on the, sort of making sure that this is sort of all squared with Denise. All right. Thank you.
Dr. Lachin, I just, can I just say something?
Yep.
So last night at the town council, they were talking about having a plan, you know, having a plan for the future. And so when we did this, that's what we did. We asked the budget committee for the money to go out to an outside source to look at all the buildings, not just the high school and middle school. They looked at all the buildings again. And then they gave us that huge binder with our needs, like one to five, the things we had to do right away, the things that could wait. So we've already done that, which I'm really happy about, because we can still work off that. And the standing building committee is part of the ride thing, because that's why we couldn't get reimbursement for the septic, because we didn't have a standing building committee, because they just made that law in the middle of it, how they like to do. So anyway, I'm really happy, and I thank so much for everybody and the building committee and the schools to get the vote, to talk to the people, because it's twelve eighteen, we can't do any of that. So I really appreciate everyone that worked on this. Thank you very much.
So we are up to, and we should also actually mention our, two school committee members, Carol Herman and Jan Burgandi, who were involved as well.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
Way back when.
Yeah.
All right. So we are up to eleven D, revised capital spending. Dr. Sanchioli?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. In your packet, I'm going to seek your approval for another change to our capital plan. The way I've constructed the document, for you to understand, you have a current plan that's on your left-hand side there. The second item down is the dishwasher here at the high school for twenty-six thousand. What we just realized, as we went out for the bid on this and so forth, there's a sixteen thousand dollar cost to install. I think we're all probably in the wrong occupation right now.
Above and beyond the twenty-six K.
Yeah. Who thought it would cost sixteen thousand dollars to install a dishwasher? So we don't have that money appropriated to do that project. I've talked with Mike and the kitchen people, although the dishwasher needs to be replaced, we probably can get through another year and something we can budget moving forward. So in replacing that, if you look on the right-hand side in the revised capital plan, we'd like to do some additional paving. We need to pave from the parking lot up to what's affectionately called the ticket office, up the field. We've had some issues with people tripping and following up there.
Yes, we did.
And then we need to pave over to the baseball field. We're not in ADA compliance there. So we'd like to do that paving. And then the second item there is the key fobs for the elementary schools will certainly enhance the safety and security. So I'm seeking your approval tonight to change the capital plan again, to replace the dishwasher with those items, the paving and the key fobs for the elementary school.
May I ask? No, I'll go after the second.
While we make the motion, then we can discuss.
Second, second.
Okay.
On my way in this evening, I noticed that the front walk at the high school has seen much better days. A lot of cracks. I actually saw a space toward the, toward the end curb, about this wide, of a dip. I'm concerned that someone with heels perhaps could get caught in there. I don't know if it's a possible consideration.
Mike's here. He's got that in his memory bank right now. We'll take a look at that tomorrow.
Even for patching, patching repair.
Patching repair, well, I think to solve the issue completely.
Yep.
Is replace.
Always.
Always, but.
Which would have to be in five-day capital plan.
It would have to be, okay.
But patching repairs, good.
I can patch it there for one week.
Okay, thank you.
Especially the gap, and if I can point it out to you, if you don't familiar with it.
I'll walk the whole side, I'll walk the whole sidewalk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So why does it cost sixteen thousand dollars to put in a twenty-six thousand dollar dishwasher?
That's a great question that we just basically got, that's what it costs.
The owner of the dishwasher company?
No, actually, it's a separate company that installs it. Where the trays go into the dishwasher, into the dishwasher, it's all stainless steel. It'll be fabricated, welded all in.
On-site.
On-site.
Dishwashers, this way, and no one's at this way. All that has to be filled and moved, taught and go electrical, and reformed also.
Can we just get three and stack them?
It's not just home, like your home dishwasher. If it wasn't, it'd be no problem.
And I'm sorry, I wasn't in here, so we're going to be able to continue with what we have, like, is that going to cause issues?
Could be a senior project.
To wash dishes?
Well, yeah, wash the dishes or to put the dishwasher in one or the other. Actually, that would be the challenge, you either have to wash the dishes or figure out a way to put this dishwasher in. You know, it's a great motivator.
So essentially, what have we replaced?
The dishwasher on the left is coming off.
Yeah, it's coming off, but you only lost three thousand, so what happened?
Twenty-six thousand. And then we've replaced that with the paving for eight thousand, the key fobs for the elementary school for fifteen thousand.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. I was listening.
I know you were. Yeah.
Yeah, I just lost one, a page, two hundred fifty dollars.
So how many of these things are we giving up?
One per staff.
Per staff. Staff.
Okay, okay.
And if I, if you don't mind, the key fobs.
So with the key fob, we currently have it at the middle school and high school, and by doing the elementary schools, it'll be the same fob, the same device, same company. But with that being said, the paper cut software that we're using for the printers, with the copy machines, also allows those fobs to be able to access the copy machines. So when a teacher wants to make a printout or a copy, instead of them having to remember their code, they swipe their fob. So it's not only allowing security for us in the buildings, knowing who's coming in, when they're coming in, it's also giving us the opportunity to use it with the printers as well.
So in the fob itself, it's like a card, or?
Just a little square.
Okay.
It's non-magnetic, it's just goes right over to the door and sends the microchip through.
So it does serve more than one purpose?
That is correct, yes. So this will also help us with the paper cut rollout that we're doing over the next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? So, all those in favor? The revised capital plan? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, this is the problem, is that I kind of toggle back and forth too much. All right, so we are on item eleven E, unpaid volunteer clubs, extracurricular activities. So I think this was sort of, at least in part, my instigation was to ask Mr. or Dr. Sanquioni to give us a sense of the various after-school activities and sports teams and things like that, that were unpaid. What I actually neglected to do and thought about it, too late to ask you in a timely fashion, would be to sort of compare this to what we are paying for. Because I know there's a lot of stipended positions of various sorts and levels.
So you actually have that? If you have your budget book from last year, there's a page dedicated solely to that?
I know, I have to find it.
Okay, I can send it to you, no problem.
Curious, HOBY, H-O-B-Y? And Save the Oceans. I know it was a young lady doing her senior project, is that, is she a senior this year or did she graduate?
Senior this year.
Okay, so it's inactive club still?
I guess my point for looking at it, and I know we can't do anything about it this year, because we have a huge structural deficit we have to deal with, it's just the parity that, you know, we do have so many, you know, whether it be hockey and the transportation and, you know, all of the volunteers for the clubs, and certainly now soccer at the middle school. We do the parity of, we do have so many volunteers and so many coaches and teams that we aren't funding, and I'm a strong proponent of, if we're going to accept them, we should fund them. I understand that given the choice of not having it at all or fundraising, most people are saying, look, we'll fundraise because the choice is, you know, but always the goal for me is to bring these into the budget, because if we're going to approve them, we should be supporting them, we should be paying for them, and there should be parity. We shouldn't be paying for some and not for others.
What's the average stipend for a club? Is it five hundred?
I think it varies.
Yeah, it varies greatly. Chris, I don't know, can you give a, they do a percentage of a salary, they assign a number to the club.
I mean, it could be from, what, five hundred to thousands?
Yeah, probably actually the-
I think for most clubs, it's closer to the five hundred, but-
The smallest would be five hundred.
Yeah, there are certain sports where it's pretty intense, it's every day.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I think it'd be useful, again, to sort of, at least for the budget for next year, to at least look at this again.
Yeah, absolutely.
And sort of say, well, what would it take to at least feel like we're compensating everybody for, you know, the pretty important work that you do. This is, you know, a lot of what keeps a lot of kids engaged, is this kind of thing, too, so. Okay?
Will do.
Any other questions or comments? If you're listening to me yammer on? Item eleven F, discussion of district information officer, Mrs. Black. If you wanted to put this on.
We know, we're supposed to have two, and we had Mr. Rarick and Mr. Fiore, so now I'm sure we have you, and we just now have to have one more. And they have to be certified by January first and mail that in, that they've gone to the course. You went to that one, but they have others with business managers and everything, they have other opportunities to certify yourself, okay? So I just want to make sure we have two people that are doing that, whoever you want. Amy?
We'll get Ms. Donley Roach certified.
So, and just to gloss this a little bit, so if the district is asked for, through a FOIA or Freedom of Information Act request, there are certain parameters by which we are compelled to respond to that, and if, and that's why we need to designate two people in order to facilitate that response. So obviously, one would be the superintendent, and obviously, one would be the assistant superintendent. Or perhaps the vice chair of the school committee.
Excellent idea.
And Dr. Delak, and I brought a form from the town, just so they could look at it, you don't have to use it. And in fact, you don't have to fill out a form, you can just stand there and ask for it, and ask to be within ten days unless you have an excuse. That's why it's important, because there's deadlines. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion about that one?
Do you have a copy of that state law? Peter?
Actually, in your packet today, in that PowerPoint, it's in that, you can see that.
Oh, thank you, okay, thank you.
What PowerPoint?
The PowerPoint in your packet.
The Attorney General Summit, you missed that.
Oh, that, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Item eleven G, homeschooling requests.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Are we taking G and H in toto?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve eleven G and eleven H.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
And you missed the discussion, Dr. Delak, and that those will now be on the consent agenda, per Ms. Farnworth's request.
Okay.
That's great.
Good. Item twelve A, elementary, so we have our meeting on the twenty-fourth and on the eighth, oh, on the eighth. So we have, on the twenty-fourth, we're going to add the-
Solar.
Solar, energy.
And you're going to see if Jan can come to that meeting? Was that your request, Dr. Delak?
Yes.
The town administrator?
Yes.
And Dr. Delak, and whenever we can, that safety rollout with Alice and everything, and the chief of, chief and the fire chief and all that?
Yeah, so, yeah, I've had some discussions with Dr. Sanquioni, and he's working with the chief about when is the most timely-
That's good, yeah.
-meeting for them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.